Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the Town Board, August 30th. And this meeting is specifically around our comprehensive plan and the generic draft environmental impact associated with that. And just so I will call this meeting to order, I'll ask our clerk for roll call, please.
Cole.
Here.
The Fountain.
Here.
Metzler.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Quinn.
Here. Okay. With that, our only item on the agenda is the comprehensive plan and I'll ask the clerk if she'll read the legal notice that was posted on this.
This public hearing is for the public to comment on the draft 2010 comprehensive plan and the draft generic environmental impact statement for the 2010 comprehensive plan. The legal notice was published in the Penfield Post on August 13th, 2010, posted on our website and posted on the Town Clerk Bulletin Board. No postcards were mailed because this is a townwide action.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Horowitz, is this properly advertised before the board?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much. Just a brief explanation and then I'm going to turn it over to staff to fill in more of the details. But essentially, the Town Board, pretty consistent with what they've been doing since 1966, commissioned a comprehensive plan update. And the Town Board assembled approximately 20 residents as well as Town staff, a couple of members, current city members of the Town Board, were not city members at the time. Councilman Quinn and myself were part of that group of 20. And the intent was to take our plan and update it. It is the roadmap for the town for the next 10 years. And to take that plan and come back with some recommendations as to what should stay the same, what should be updated, and anything else. And so we, again, worked with a couple of consultants and our Town staff. That plan was presented to us by Debbie Draw, who's our current county legislator, then former Town Board member. And Debbie chaired that and Debbie presented that to the Town Board in April of this year. And then this board had indicated that we would take a very aggressive stance by way of the next steps. And so the next steps were to start to take a look at that document that was prepared and submitted to the board, to start a process of developing the generic draft environmental impact statement, providing open time for comments, setting a public hearing. And then I believe, so I'd probably get in the weeds a little far, but I think the scoping period for comments ends on the 17th of September, if I'm not mistaken. And then from there, staff will take all of the comments collected, either through email, public hearing tonight, and anything else, and put that together. And so with that, I'm going to just ask our planning director, Katie Evans, to give us a little bit more detail about the process. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I'm here tonight to provide you a brief summary of how we arrived at the public hearing phase of this project. As Supervisor LaFountain mentioned, we have a long history of comprehensive planning. We adopted plans not only in 1966, but 1978, 1990, and 2000. During the planning stages of the 2008 budget cycle, the town decided to embark on the update of the 2000 plan. That budget line was approved in October of 2007. This plan was going to be staff-assisted, consultant-led, with an appointed steering committee, as was already mentioned. Early 2008, the Town Board hired the consultant team of John Steymetz of Steymetz Planning Group and Matt Ingles of Ingles Planning and Design. During spring of 2008, the Town Board appointed 20 members to the steering committee. And I just want to elaborate a little bit on this because careful consideration was taken to ensure the committee had a cross-section of representatives. These representatives included long-term residents, short-term residents, we had a home builder, realtor, preservationist, an engineer, a farmer, West Penfield residents, East Penfield residents, representatives from the Conservation Board, the Zoning Board, the Planning Board, and the Town Board, just to name a few. It was this committee's job to balance out the diverse interests of our residents. The committee received input along the way through public participation opportunities and comments that were submitted for their consideration. The information on this project was added to the Town website and an email distribution list was created. And then just to elaborate a little bit more, on April 21st, Chairperson Debbie Draw presented the draft comprehensive plan to the Town Board for their review and consideration. The draft plan was made available on the Town website, in the Town Clerk's office, and in the library the following day. Since April, the Town Board and staff have worked to inform our residents that this draft plan is available for your review and comment. We've also been working to comply with the required environmental state review. That process includes soliciting comments from interested agencies like our neighboring towns and villages and other government agencies. That brings us to tonight's public hearing. This evening, our consultant, John Steymetz, will provide an overview on the process of the plan and the draft document. Evan Shepard, another planner in the Planning Department, will review the environmental review and the steps that we've taken. And then I'll provide an outline of the remaining steps. And then the Town Board will open the meeting up for public comment. So with that, John?
Thanks, Katie. Appreciate it. Thanks for having me here tonight. Hello, everyone. Those of you who I know, good to see you again. Those of you who I don't, nice to be here. Oh, you're Vanna, right? You get to, I forgot. Katie already accomplished item number one, general overview and project background. I'm going to go over briefly the planning process we used to complete this draft document and the timeline associated with it. And then I'm going to talk about what I feel the three main components of this document. The community profile, the vision and policies, which are the text and narrative of the document, and then finally, the future land use section of the document. The planning process that we used, as Katie said, there's, the town had been thinking about doing this process well in advance of this schedule you see in front of you. But I want to start from when the committee had our first initiation meeting with staff, with myself, with my colleague Matt Ingles, who was not able to make it tonight. That was summer of 2008. That was our project initiation meeting with the committee. And then the Town staff came up with an idea that I had not seen before or heard of before of, let's do, I don't know, five or six, how many did we do? Five or six training sessions with the committee members to get everyone on the same page. These training sessions kind of helped the committee understand how Penfield does the business of government, what are the key considerations that the government has on a day-in and day-out basis. So they spent the summer, they being staff, spent the summer training, for lack of a better word, the steering committee members on issues such as drainage, wetlands, environmental features, a team member, a fourth team member of our team, Steve Ferrani, did a presentation on traffic, et cetera. So that's how we spent the summer of 2008. In the fall, we took the feedback of the key issues given to us by the committee and developed a community profile. And that's got a snapshot of Penfield in 2008, 2009, on which to build the plan. Following that, in October, we had a youth workshop and a community forum. Hopefully, some of you were able to attend the community forum, where we, again, just wanted more input, more feedback from the public before we went too far into the process. All of that feedback culminated in preliminary vision and policies and ultimately led to, like I said, the text narrative portion of this document. In the winter of 2009, we had two land use workshops, one on this campus and one at the Bear Road Community Center. That led to the future land use map that I would say it was, the first draft of the future land use map was spring of '09, but I would, the edits to that map that you see behind me and we'll talk about later, I think were continuous up until April. You know, we kept tweaking it and improving it over the rest of the process. In summer of 2009, we combined the community profile, the vision and policies, the future land use map, and some additional narrative into what I would call the preliminary plan. In the fall, we developed implementation ideas. And then we took that document and the committee did an extensive and thorough review of that document in the winter of 2009, 2010. And then in the spring of 2010, staff finished the secret documentation. That brings us to this evening of summer 2010, the public hearing. And I just want to reiterate, as part of that process, we took great care in to make sure there was ample opportunity for public input. There is a youth workshop that we did with this, a couple senior classes of Penfield Central School District. There is a community forum, which was open to all residents. And then there was two land use workshops, and then there's a public hearing, obviously, that we're here this evening. Getting into a little planned content, the community profile summary. If you were at the community forum, I went through this in a fair amount of detail. I'm not going to go into that much detail tonight. I'm going to try to hit the high points. Jim? Some key issues, of which there are a lot of them, in no specific order, some of the strengths, generally speaking, everyone said Penfield's a great place to live. It's attractive, it's clean, there's good schools, it's safe. Some of the weaknesses, traffic came up quite a bit under weaknesses and threats. Heard about no Town Center or nowhere for kids to hang out. If young people are going to go hang out, they'll hang out in Fairport or Pittsburgh or something like that. High taxes were seen as a threat. Not addressing some of the traffic issues in the town, again, were a threat. Traffic came up in, I think, probably three of the four categories. The strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities, and threats that we solicited. We looked at things like population growth. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but between 1960 and 1970, Penfield's population nearly doubled from approximately 12,000 people to almost 24,000 residents. And since 1970, each decade has seen anywhere from a 3,000 to 4,000 person increase. Looking ahead, and again, this is a best guess made by our local regional planning council, Penfield's population looking into 2010, 2030, 2040, is expected to continue to increase, but at a slower rate. So instead of 3,000 to 4,000 people a decade, it's closer to 2,000 people a decade. But again, this is a projection. We looked at things like shifting in age groups. One of the key issues we heard was the aging of the town's population, which is not only happening in Penfield, but upstate New York and our country as a whole, the graying of the population, as people like to say. We verified that with census data. We looked at things like new home starts, and you see the big bar at the bottom is 1960s, about approximately 3,500 new homes were under construction or initiated in the 60s, and then in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, that number was closer to 2,000 homes a decade. We looked at things such as steep slopes and woodlots, wetlands and flood plains, existing land use. And out of this, we came up with a handful of assumptions to help guide our plan's development. The first, as I already touched on, is that population growth in the town will continue, but at a slower rate than previously experienced. Also, the growth of the senior population in that class of citizenry will outpace other age groups. Educational attainments will remain very high throughout the town. You've got, I think, a four, a total of four school districts that educate all of your children's, and they are all doing a good enough job, and you have high levels of educational attainment from the school system and the people who choose to move here. So we don't see that being an issue moving forward. Real estate values will be among the highest in the county, as they have been historically. We anticipate that remaining so. The city of Rochester is a primary place of employment for local residents. Although, one of the ideas in this plan is to get more local employment opportunities, I don't think in the next decade, nor did the committee think in the next decade, that it's going to pass Rochester as being the primary place of employment. Rochester is still going to be the place where most residents work, and a lot of that is driven by U of R and the hospital. Sanitary sewer capacity will be one of the primary limitations on new residential development. Road capacities are generally adequate throughout the town, but there will need to be spot improvements for certain, we all know intersections that are congested and that you avoid during rush hour. Over time, those will need to be addressed, as they have been over the last decade. And finally, residential development will continue to occur in the town, and it's most likely to occur in central Penfield and some sections of eastern Penfield. The policy framework that we built the plan around, and I just want to spend a minute on this, it can get kind of planning geekish, is different if you ask every planner how they do their plans. Some planners just do policies, some do goals, some do strategies. And what we did with this plan is essentially four key pieces. We've got a vision statement for the entire town, and that statement describes the overall aspiration of the town. It's a broad statement, and it should be applicable for the 10-year planning period that we are focusing on through 2020. Underneath this, not yet, Jim, let me go through them all. Underneath the vision, which I'll share with you in a minute, is a series of policies, and they are more focused, for example, our national government has a foreign policy or an educational policy, so there's still broad umbrella statements and areas to deal with, but they're more focused than the vision itself. Strategies are action items. How are we going to improve things like natural resources? Are we going to enhance, preserve, adopt, that type of language? And finally, implementation items are very specific things. What are we going to change? What project are we going to undertake to accomplish the strategy, which then supports the policy and ultimately helps us achieve the town vision? So I've got just a few slides I've got to read to you tonight, and this is one of them just so I get it right. I didn't expect to be this far away. This is going to be an eyesight challenge. Let's see how I do. So the vision of Penfield. It is the vision of Penfield to remain an attractive place to grow up, receive an education, work, raise a family, and retire. The town will be a community that has diverse residential living options that are safe and attractive, quality community resources to serve businesses and residents, rewarding economic development opportunities, sustainable natural resources, a safe and efficient transportation system, community character and design that is a source of community pride, and finally, effective government and strong leadership. The town will achieve this vision by engaging its residents, capitalizing on its assets, and ensuring future public and private investments positively contribute to the local tax base and are developed in a manner that enhances the character of our community. So it's, as you can see, it's very broad, very mom and apple pie, but there's a lot of information in that statement. And the seven bulleted areas become the framework for this plan. So there's seven policy areas. The plan actually doesn't have chapters in it, but if they did have, if it did have chapters, these would be it. You've got a residential living policy area, community resources, economic opportunities, natural resources, transportation, community character, and government and leadership. Essentially, all the feedback we heard throughout this process, all the key issues, can fall under one of these seven categories. So residential living is the first category. This is the policy statement. It is a policy of the town to have neighborhoods and residential living opportunities that are safe and attractive. That's the crux of it. That's why I highlighted that in red. That's it in a nutshell. The rest of this is more for clarification. The community will continue to place a priority on preserving the appeal of existing neighborhoods. The town will locate future residential development in a manner that efficiently uses available infrastructure capacity while minimizing the loss of high-quality farmland and avoiding environmentally sensitive areas. Over the next decade, Penfield will remain a bedroom community that strives to have a combination of housing types available to residents of various ages, incomes, and family structures. How do we achieve that? We've got numerous strategies. This isn't all of them, and we have even more implementation items. I don't have enough time, nor do you guys want to sit here and listen to me drone on through all of them. So in a nutshell, things such as, strategies such as minimize neighborhood nuisance issues, whether it's noise, speeding, whatever they might be, one of the strategies is to make sure those are minimized or eliminated. Increase a variety of living options. Again, the aging population, the nations and states preferences are changing in terms of what people want for housing, to keep up with that. Some of the implementation items, some of the detailed stuff, for example, utilize traffic calming techniques as appropriate, whether it's through design of new residential subdivisions or as a retrofit through speed humps or speed bumps or something like that. I'm not going to go through all these tables. I just want to share with you that at the end of each of these policy areas, of which there are seven, there's several pages of detailed implementation items. And those tables contain the item itself to the left, the priority of that item, whether it's an ongoing program or initiative, or whether it's a short or long-term type project or plan. The responsible party, most of the responsible parties will be the town, but not all. And because this is a community plan, and the government can't do everything, so there's going to be other responsible parties. And there's a slew of partners off to the right. So these are partners that are going to help the town achieve the various implementation items that you see in these tables. Community resources. It is a policy of the town to have community resources that provide a high level of service to the local businesses and residents at a reasonable cost. The rest of the statement talks about the benefits of the law enforcement, local ambulance services, fire companies, the public safety type, the service providers that you have. And then finally, it talks, in addition to the welfare type, community wellness, public library system, the churches, the school districts, and the parks system, for example, and what they add to the community. Some of the strategies. The obvious one is to continue to provide quality resources to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of residents, especially as the population does continue to age. For example, the third bullet, another one the committee felt necessary and to call out, was to provide activities and programs to meet the needs of all age groups, so the graying population as well as the young people. And one thing that came up a fair amount is a detailed technical thing, but is improved stormwater management practices. You know, how are we going to improve that as development occurs or as we retrofit existing subdivisions and neighborhoods? One idea is to utilize regional drainage facilities instead of small individual ponds, have a more regional system to stormwater management as we move forward. Economic opportunities. It is a policy of the town to have rewarding economic opportunities within the community. And then there's some discussion of fostering agriculture and obviously getting more industrial and commercial enterprises within the town. Some of the strategies, again, foster the viability of agricultural operations. A lot of communities, I do a fair amount of planning, whether it's comm plan or other type of community planning, and a lot of communities say, you know, we really want farming and open space and the character it provides our community, but they fail to focus on the economic development or the economic emphasis of farming, the viability of farming. And that's one thing that came through loud and clear with the committee, is that we've got to foster the viability of farming operations as a business, and then we can experience and enjoy the benefits provided by open space and farmland. Increasing commercial and industrial tax base was a constant theme throughout this plan. And how are we going to accomplish some of these things? Historically, Penfield has, it's been described as Penfield has six primary commercial districts. And moving forward, the town is considering and thinking about including in this document, maybe we should foster each of them in a unique way, that we market their services kind of like a mall would or a village would. At Christmas time, you always hear the village, shop the village of Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh or shop the village of Fairport. Maybe something like that needs to happen for Lloyd's Corners or the Bay Creek area or something like that. Natural resources. It is a policy of the town to be a community that preserves and sustains its natural resources. Sound development practices, proper zoning guidelines, green initiatives, and community stewardship will be employed to reduce or eliminate the degradation of these resources. In particular, special attention will continue to be paid to the protection of environmentally sensitive areas such as wetlands, steep slopes, et cetera. Some of the strategies, and I think this is a big one, at the end of my part of this presentation, I'm going to talk about the three things I want you to walk away from from this plan and from my presentation tonight. I almost included a fourth. If there was a fourth, it would have been this. Pursue green technologies and energy conservation techniques to minimize a community's environmental footprint. This whole sustainability, green infrastructure, green thinking came through loud and clear throughout this process, and I think we've captured it well in this document. How are we going to accomplish some of this stuff? The town has an existing incentive zoning law. One thing that we talked about at the committee level is, one of the, we could revise that to include green building techniques as a amenity in lieu of an incentive or in exchange for an incentive, just a different way to think about incentive zoning and how to get green technology in the development community. Transportation. It is a policy of the town to have a transportation system that enhances our quality of life and meets the needs of our residents, businesses, and the traveling public. Again, that's the crux of it. But transportation's evolving. The town will continue to focus its efforts on creating a safe travel environment for more active living, one that increases opportunities and entices residents to walk and bike to meet their daily needs while promoting health and wellness. Over the next decade, Penfield will strive to achieve this policy in a manner that ensures the safety of all modes of travel and contributes to the overall character of the community. Some of the strategies, and some of these are ongoing strategies, I should have mentioned that earlier. One of the things that's great about Penfield is the government and the community does so much already. So in other places where I work, we always have to talk about getting things started. With Penfield, a lot of the discussion was continuing a good thing, such as expanding the multimodal network, whether it's sidewalks or trails. The town does expand their sidewalks on an annual basis and to continue thinking like Community character and design. It is a policy of the town to manage investment and development in a manner that enhances the character of the community for future generations to enjoy. Some of the strategies are to develop attractive inviting and pedestrian-oriented activity centers, streets, and other spaces. We didn't go through them in detail, but one of the key issues we heard about was, you know, some of the unattractive commercial areas or properties, and how do we improve those over time? That kind of type of thinking and the fact that you guys, Penfield has such a success in creating attractive businesses and commercial areas led to this type of language in the plan, that we want to foster that more in the future. Another one that came out time and time again was promoting Penfield's identity. How do people know when they're in Penfield? How can we achieve more of an awareness of Penfield as a community? In the last policy area, government and leadership. It is a policy of the town to have a positive atmosphere in which strong leadership, open communication, and collective action are supported. Over the next decade, the town will encourage stakeholders to respect one another, share ideas, and work together to make our community the best town within the region. In order to accomplish this, Penfield will remain a model for effective delivery of governmental services and decision-making. How do we achieve this vision? How do we accomplish it? Encourage and improve the ability of stakeholders, residents, businesses, that would all fall under stakeholders, to communicate with and participate in government. One idea is to expand on the neighborhood notification that the town currently does by including electronic notification. That would be, again, that, I have not heard of a community doing that. That would be more cutting-edge thinking that Penfield is currently considering. Land use. I would say this is the third piece of the plan. Let me see, as best I can, ooh, figures, going to break something. Few main things to point out. The two dominant colors on this land use map, a future land use map is not a zoning map, it's more of a general concept of, over the next 10 years, what's the, what changes could be supported in Penfield's existing land use pattern? You don't see any zoning or lot lines on here. You don't, it's not a zoning map. So I had a woman earlier come up and ask me very nicely, you know, are the white lines a trail system? No, but it's not a bad idea. It's an interesting suggestion. But no, they're not, it's not a trail system. It's just meant to show that these are general boundaries, they're not meant to be zoning code hard and fast, strict boundaries. So with that, what I want to cover, the two dominant colors, this, it's supposed to be yellow up here, it comes up kind of like a mustard. This mustard area you see throughout the town is essentially single-family residential, and we'll talk about what that means in a minute. But as it was articulated in the last plan, one of the goals of the last plan was to maintain the single-family unit as a dominant development pattern in the town, and we're continuing that thinking. So this is single-family living, and as you can see, it's throughout the town. And then on the eastern part of Penfield, you've got rural residential agricultural, again, larger lots, a lot of farming, agricultural uses still active in the east. And if you were to look at the last land use map, which I was going to show you, it was black and white, and it really didn't read really well. Essentially, this is pretty close to where it is there, and again, a predominant part of the town is single-family type land use in the previous plan as well. So some of the changes to highlight. This orange is high-density residential, and I'll talk more about what is high-density residential in a minute, but high-density residential opportunities near Jackson where infrastructure supports it, south of the Village of Webster. The thinking was to extend some of the denser living pattern that's already in the Village of Webster and take advantage of the existing infrastructure that's currently in place there. Moving south down 259 to this area, Sweets Corners, south of Atlantic or Browncroft, depending on how you want to describe this geographic location. This area, it's actually burnt orange, I guess, for lack of a better color description. It looks red. But that's one of the mixed-use areas. That's mixed-use. This is mixed-use. This is mixed-use. Four corners is mixed-use. So the idea, as the name implies, is to allow a blending of uses. It's not going to be all residential. It's not going to be all commercial, that you might have the YMCA in close proximity to townhouses in close proximity to single-family homes, so it could be a blending of residential, commercial, institutional, community-type uses. The other noteworthy aspect, 259, 441, there's been a lot of discussion and requests over the years of, should we expand these boundaries a little bit? And this plan does show a small expansion of existing 441, 250. For example, the properties across from Target that are residential in nature, those are now included in this commercial-type land use classification that is red. This is commercial, not mixed-use. It may look mixed-use, but it's actually red. Again, just to clarify the distinction between future land use map and zoning map, all the red blobs which are here, 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 and here are just commercial, and we'll talk more about that in a second. It doesn't identify exactly what type of commercial as far as zoning goes. The town has, Katie, how many commercial districts? You've got general, six zoning classifications? No, it's, I'm sorry, it was a bad question, phrased poorly. You've got restricted business, general business.
Limited business, E and R, business on retail, and then light industrial.
So you've got essentially three to four. I mean, right now, the current zoning code has three to four commercial classifications, and this doesn't get into that level of detail. This map isn't meant to usurp the traditional zoning process involved by the planning board, the zoning board, and ultimately, the Town Board. This is to convey that commercial-type uses are supported in this area to the extent, and how far the commercial uses can go in terms of your code, that's to be determined as time unfolds. And finally, Evan, would you refer to this, Redmond Lake?
Yeah.
The former quarter- The former quarry operation, this is that orange, dark orange color, mixed-use zoning, mixed-use land use type of classification around the Redmond Lake area as that transitions from quarry to something else. Just want to explore in a little more detail, what does all this mean? So the dominant land use color behind me, the yellow, the single-family residential, low-density residential, what is that? Generally speaking, you're talking half to two-acre lots, which again, you have the most of any land use in your town. I use this photo in the plan, the Willabon Drive neighborhood is as a good example as any. It's not like I, it's not my favorite or non-favorite neighborhood, I just thought that's a perfect example of what we're talking about for the yellow area. High-density residential, and again, generally, general statement, it's on lots less than a half an acre, so it could be, you know, a senior living center or apartment building, something like this, this is the Willow Pond Way area. It could be patio homes or single-family homes on small lots, but lots are less than a half-acre lots. This would be referred to as high-density residential, could be townhomes, could be senior living. Rural residential agricultural, that's probably the easiest one to talk about and convey. We're talking about this, East Penfield. Commercial, and again, these are exclusively commercial areas. You've got the Bay, Bay Road, Creek Street, Lloyd's Corners, Browncroft Blossom Creek area, those type of areas where it's strictly a node, a small node in the Browncroft Blossom Creek area, a large node up here of commercial activity. Mixed-use. You already do have some mixed-use areas in the town. When we first started talking about this out by the YMCA area, people were like, geez, that's new to Penfield. It's really not. The four corners area is mixed-use, it's just more of a traditional village-type arrangement of mixed-use. Most of the planners I talked to talk about La Salle's Landing is being mixed-use as well already in some way, shape, or form. So we're talking about, and the question was raised during this process, does it make sense to have more of that thinking, more mixed-use areas in the town over the next decade? And one of the things that came up, it was a great discussion with the committee, is what is a mixed-use? What is characteristic of these areas? So we did a, we had an assignment for internet search, and we had quite a bit of discussion. And the nice thing about the discussion we had and the answer is, it's flexible, we don't know. That's why we're using the term mixed-use. Generally speaking, mixed-use areas that we found when the committee did the research had some common themes. You've obviously, to have a mixed-use area, you need mixing of uses, whether it's horizontal mixing of uses where there's residential next to commercial, or vertical mixing of uses where you might have apartments above a store. So that's, that could happen either way in theory. Generally speaking, the streets in these newer mixed-use developments around the country, you've got narrower streets, on the side streets, you've got, you might have on-street parking, sidewalk, street trees. All of these things lead up to a more pedestrian-friendly environment, so you can walk between the uses. It's not like you've got to get in your car, hop in your car to go to the townhouse the next door. It'll be, it'll be a direct seamless connection through sidewalks, trails, or something like that. Beyond this plan, that, it's one of the next steps of this plan would be to further define what mixed-use might mean to Penfield in the different locations. Mixed-use by the YMCA Suites Corners might be very different than mixed-use by Redmond Lake. Even though they've got the same land use category, they could be very different in how they manifest themselves. In the last two, industrial, there's really no proposed expansion of the industrial areas in this, in the future land use map. It's more of acknowledgement, we do have these areas and there is a space available, and we'd like to fill them over time. And finally, the green areas on the map, the light green, recreation and sanctuary, acknowledge the parks and the natural systems that you already have in place on the map. And finally, the three themes I talked to you about earlier that we tried to carry through and the committee would constantly talk about, that's how, when Katie and I were trying to put together this presentation, I said, Katie, what I remember about the process, looking back, is we talked a lot about aging in place and the housing needs and the transportation system needs and the community infrastructure needs of transportation to your house from the activities that might be happening here or Baird Road or somewhere else. So all of the needs of the aging population. The creation of a town center, not saying you don't have one currently, some people say the four corners are a town center, it very well could be, but the idea of possibly another town center near the YMCA, near Suites Corners, the creation of that mixed-use area came up time and time again. And finally, to ensure that all the decisions, whether it's fiscal, governmental, et cetera, are done with fiscal responsibility in mind, that the decisions positively impact the economic situation of the town versus negatively impact. And with, that's all I have. Who do I, Evan? Let's turn it over to Evan.
John, thank you. John Steinmetz from Steinmetz Consulting, Planning and Consulting, and Matt Engels, who were our partners, our outside partners that came in to help pull all this together. So thank you, John, for that. And we'll make sure we pass it on to Matt as well. Thank you. Evan?
Thanks. I'm Evan Shepard, I'm the planning technician here, and I'm just going to take a few minutes to explain our environmental review process with the draft generic environmental impact statement. Do you want to just pull up the second slide there for me? So first of all, typically, environmental impact statements are development-specific to a specific site for a specific project, so we typically get more into more greater detail with traffic calculations or drainage reports. But with this comp plan, it's a much more general process where we're just having conceptual ideas, we don't have any specifics like that. So because of that, we've attempted to put together a logical overview of these possible impacts and the associated recommendations in the plan. Go ahead. Some of the acronyms that we throw around with this environmental process, SECR is the state statute that guides the whole thing that requires the town to consider environmental factors from the beginning of the planning stage all the way through to the end. And the DGIS provides the initial discussion of the impacts. And then the FGIS will identify the substantive public comments that we receive. It'll establish the town board's responses to those comments, and it will make any necessary changes to the DGIS, and that may lead to some changes to the comp plan. So, go ahead. The GIS basically solidifies and/or modifies the plan's recommendations, depending on the public input that we receive. And it's really the route that we use to get public input and have that public input affect the final product. This shows you the layout of the DGIS. A lot of this is established by the SECR requirements. Two of the main sections I'm going to, two of the sections I'm going to focus on are the environmental setting, impacts, and mitigation, and the alternatives. So each of these topic, each of these sections within the environmental setting, we first have to establish what the current conditions are, and then talk about what the possible impacts are, and the mitigation that's either seems to be required or is already proposed. So for the first, the first topic would be the town's infrastructure. We discussed the transportation network, how the plan already recommends to guard against exceeding the capacities of our roads, and as John mentioned, the places where there may be congestion in the future. And then we also discussed the alternative methods of transportation that John mentioned, and how those, how those other methods will mitigate the impacts of development. The document discusses the sanitary sewer capacity, you know, where it's available, and also where additional studies may be required before we can implement some of the land use recommendations. And then also, the town watershed studies will be important to update and make sure that we have adequate data to ensure that we're not going to be adversely impacting downstream properties or our water resources. So, go ahead. As the, as John said, the town, or the plan recognized the need for higher-density residential development because of the aging population and just needing to provide a variety of housing types. So townhouse and patio homes, we anticipate those will continue to be in high demand. So because of that potential impact, the town calls, or the plan calls for concentrating, concentrating those types of development in specific areas, and also to update our environmental protection overlay districts, and also to just, we already have and we are recommending expanded protections that we do not negatively impact the neighbors. The plan also discusses how we will need to have some commercial growth to support the cost of community services. It's basically, we've put some data in the plan that shows how the commercial uses have a very positive impact on the tax base. And we also have substantial mitigation already in place for, in the form of the zoning ordinance and the required setbacks and the parking ratios and buffers to the residential uses. And then there's also the design guidelines and other policies that provide for our aesthetic appeal of the properties and access management, proper lighting, and accommodations for pedestrians. So those are already part of the plan. Go ahead. And John already mentioned a bunch about the mixed-use development. Along with, along with that, you know, he said that we'll be needing to go into more detail, and part of the mitigation of this increased density would be some new planning strategies that, so for example, as John showed, for the Suites Corners 250 area, the DGIS discusses how those design elements that the committee identified, how those will mitigate the potential impacts. And of course, the protecting the sensitive environmental features is strongly recommended there, so, go ahead. For natural resources, the plan, again, is seeking to concentrate development in the appropriate areas, like areas where there's adequate infrastructure, and the idea being that this will relieve development pressure on areas that have more natural resource, existing natural resource value. And the plan absolutely is recommending the continued implementation of the open-space plan and the use of other planning tools that we use, like clustering, to preserve the natural, natural resources of the town. Go ahead. The community facilities and services, since the town has an aging population, we anticipate this, this may lead to increased demand for emergency response services, but it'll potentially lead to decreased need for, or decreased demand on schools. So because of that, because of that, the plan recommends adjusting the uses of our facilities and expanding senior programs and recreational opportunities, so, go ahead. Now, as far as agricultural, the agricultural community, we began as, you know, fully agricultural and have transitioned to only having about a half dozen farming families left in Penfield. So that's, you know, what led to our open-space preservation efforts, and the plan does have some recommendations for additional things to support the farmers, so expanded farm markets or continuation of the tax programs and strategic, again, strategic concentration of development in the appropriate areas. Now, we do need to acknowledge that there may be open-space conflicts between the open-space plan and, you know, development projects, but the open-space plan does acknowledge that there may be cases where preservation of the site is not possible, and so, you know, instead, the use of planning tools like clustering can preserve the natural features of the site. So the alternatives, there are three alternatives that we looked at. No action, what would happen if we, if the plan was not adopted? Development, basically, the development would continue, and it would just occur with the current ordinances and policies that we have now, and we wouldn't be able to adjust to the changing, you know, the changes in demographics and the changes in the town's needs. The adoption of a portion of the plan, I hope I've kind of explained how, or showed how different parts of this plan depend on each other and reinforce each other, so adoption of only a portion, we would feel that that would not fully address the community's needs. The town board may look for some modifications to the plan, but I would anticipate that the integration of the different strategies will still occur, so. And the adoption of a different plan, this is always a, you know, possible outcome, but since, you know, since we have such a, have had such a well-planned process with the, you know, with the carefully chosen steering committee and the public input opportunities, I think we can have some confidence that the current plan reflects the, is the best reflection of the community as a whole. And so, because of all that, the DGIS states that the, that none of these options appear as appropriate alternatives, so. Go ahead. And finally, the appendices, we have a lot of plans that support the, that support the comp plan by adding a lot more detail or recommendations to the specific, you can notice some of those are, a lot of those are regional, you know, area plans and getting more detail that the comp plan references, so. And now Katie is going to take us through the next steps.
Thank you, Evan. Nice job. Thank you very much.
Okay. I'm going to talk about next steps following the public hearing. The next step will be to complete the public review process on the DGEIS. Comments will be accepted until 5:00 on September 17th. Following that, a final generic environmental impact statement will be prepared incorporating any changes that the town board feels are appropriate. The town board will then prepare a finding statement that will provide the board's rationale for its pending decision. Following that, the plan, the actual comprehensive plan may be modified by the town board due to public input, environmental review findings, infrastructure limitations or opportunities, and budgetary constraints. After completion of the environmental review process and consideration of all public input, the board will make its final decision on the plan. After the plan is adopted, after, I should say, a plan is adopted, boards, committees, and staff will use this plan as the foundation upon which future planning and decision, policy decisions are to be based. Okay. So how do I submit my comments? With this slide, I really, really want to emphasize that the town board and staff really wants your input on this draft document. We want to know if we've hit the mark on this or if we're totally off. For those of you who have participated so far, thank you very much, and I ask you to continue doing so until we get to the adoption of this document. And then, of course, the implementation of the final document as well. This document is going to determine how the community is going to grow over the next 10 to 15 years, so I cannot emphasize how important this is to all of us. Every comment submitted in writing will be provided to the town board for their consideration, provided to staff, and become part of public record. And of course, if you need more information, you can go to the town website at penfield.org. You're always welcome to call the planning department, set up an appointment with Evan or I, or Jim Costello, and we'd be happy to sit down with you and talk about different elements of the plan, or something that you might find confusing or not understand how the steering committee may have gotten to that end result. So thank you for your continued interest in the town of Penfield.
Great. Thank you, Katie. Before we get started and open it up to public comment, I would just remind our viewing audience, if you'd like to participate via phone, 340-8771. You can also participate through our website at penfield.org. And I would just like to recognize a couple of individuals. I did mention Debbie Drew, who was our chairperson, part of that committee. I think I saw Ruth Grace in the, in the audience. I saw Mike, Michael Quinn, Paul Craig, and did I miss anybody else? Those were some, oh, Dave Woodward, I didn't see Dave sneak in. Dave Woodward right there in the back, Dave, thank you. So we had a nice cross-section of individuals, and thank you for your commitment over the last couple of years to help us get to this point, and thank you for your continued support on being here tonight. So with that, I would ask our clerk to start with those that signed up. If you didn't sign up, that's okay. Once we go through the list that have signed up, then we'll open it up to the, to the rest of the folks. And so with that.
Also, I'd like to say, as you approach to speak, please make sure you state your name and your address. That would also go for anyone who is watching at home. If you're going to call in or send an email, please make sure that we will have your name and address. The planning department is... The planning department is required to attract sources of comments for the final generic environmental impact statement. If you have not filled out an intent to speak at a public hearing sheet that we have over on one of the tables, you can come up and speak, but before you leave tonight, if you could please fill in your name and address there as well. And the first person that I have is Kevin Gallagher.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Gallagher. I live at 1973 Dublin Road. I have a number of concerns, but I'm going to try to keep it short. I participated in the land use workshops, and it seemed that before we got started, the issue of a town center had already been presented. So I'm not sure where the issue came from. It didn't seem to come from the other participants in the workshop. I'm not, I don't know how it was chosen. I don't know who brought it up. So I'm concerned at whether it's been pushed from outside or it's just obscure suggestion. The other thing about the town center at Suites Corners is if development, current development is centered to the west, this new location is actually on the east side of the population. So I don't believe it would serve the public as well as another location. In consideration of industrial and commercial development, seems to be a misconception that the town of planned progress, progress equals development. And certainly, I believe that we could progress and be a better community without using up all of our resources, especially land. And the current land that we have has already been partitioned by roads, by smaller developments, individual houses, and the value of the natural resources is being diminished because it's being sectioned off. It seems as though it's no longer useful as a environmental, something with value. The list of strengths and weaknesses, and there are two other categories, they seem to have been generated from input from members of the community. Their concerns, there were some youth groups that came up with what they thought was good and bad about the community. But it doesn't seem as though those issues are supported by data or may actually be factual issues. I think there should have been some sort of study to say, is this issue a legitimate issue, or is it an issue of perception? Perhaps education about what we have available to us would be the way to resolve this. So I'm concerned that the plan is based on non-supported issues. Excuse me. The, part of the, the land use workshop, they discussed the tax revenue and the cost of supportive services and taxes that the different types of property generate and cost. And I'm not sure, but I thought that agriculture was the least expensive for a community to support. That's less infrastructure, less fire ambulance. And one of the higher ones was commercial development. So it seems as though commercial development has actually increased the tax burden. And over the years, the taxes haven't seemed to come down, though we've been developing the community for 40, 50 years. So that's another thing I'm concerned about. I am gonna take the opportunity to address many of these issues, but I plan on doing that in writing, so I can do so in detail.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for your time and support on this. Thank you.
Okay. Sam Green.
Hi, Sam. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Sam Green, and I live at 58 Seaberry Boulevard. I hope this is the right venue to address this, because what I would like to speak about briefly here is the proposal to rezone residential property to general business slash commercial business. This in no way runs over into the fine job that the planning board has just presented, what I'm gonna be speaking of. As homeowners living on Seaberry Boulevard, we have a vested interest in the value, appearance, and overall livability of our neighborhood. We have lived on Seaberry Boulevard for 12 years, and during that time, we have made many improvements to our home and extensive additions in landscaping. The Seaberry-Brant Point-Daniels Creek neighborhood is one that people have taken pride in and enjoy due to its privacy and limited traffic. In the morning and evening, it is very common to see families and singles out walking with their children and pets around the Seaberry-Brant Point area. The wooded land adjacent to Brant Point and currently zoned residential is overflowing with wildlife. It is extremely common to observe deer, rabbits, fox, raccoons, grouse, and large numbers of songbirds on the edges of those woods. This summer, a pair of hawks nested in the large trees located only 100 yards from the corner of Seaberry and Brant Point. The plan submitted by a developer would turn that grove of large pine trees into unattractive commercial buildings, complete with acres of parking lots, heavy trucks coming and going all day, bringing supplies, large volumes of traffic, and the added bonus of more nighttime noise and lights. The developer's solution to the noise, lights, and dust and associated commercial distractions is to hide them behind a permanent 35-foot berm slash wall from the south side of Brant Point, encircling the entire site with the purpose of presenting a more pleasing appearance. The view would go from one of woods and open spaces to something akin to a landfill or a prison wall. Our neighbors on Jewelberry and Guy Grace would also have this wall as the view from the back of their property. I was talking to my wife, and I wonder, if a 35-foot wall is not a monstrosity, what is? I want to be clear that I'm not opposed to any renewal of Baytown Plaza. However, I am opposed to any effort to bring about the rezoning of the currently zoned residential property. Rezoning of that property to commercial, general business will serve to downgrade the livability of the area, reduce the value of the homes in the neighborhood, and bring congestion to the area. I am opposed to any plan that transforms Brant Point from a two-lane, quiet residential street into a four-lane, high-traffic, major point of entry into a shopping center. This traffic plan would eliminate the pleasures now enjoyed by our neighbors when they walk, bike, or jog. I am also opposed to any plan that fails to bring forth a creative and mindful approach to the renewal and upgrading of the plaza. Creativity is difficult. Creativity requires thinking outside the box and demonstrating respect for those most affected. Unfortunately, the town board was presented with an easy plan. Easy is tiresome, lacking in vision, and fails to follow the directives of the town board, and most importantly, shows disrespect for this board and its citizens. Penfield deserves much better. To renew Baytown Plaza, the project should be focused upon the renewal of the current plaza. It should be accomplished in such an approach that the livability of the surrounding neighborhoods suffers no detrimental effects and with regard to the long-term consequences of the surrounding areas. The residents and homeowners of the North Penfield Crossroads area deserve better than the ill-conceived, neighborhood-destroying plans submitted thus far to date. They deserve the town board to demonstrate not only moral courage, but also foresight and only consider a plan that preserves the current residential zoning of the property in question and the quality of life of the surrounding neighborhoods. To quote from a slide I just saw on the mission statement of the town of Penfield, "Enhancing the Community Character." That's all we want. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sam. And before our clerk calls the next, next individual up, we did receive an email from a Paul Lupo, and he goes on to state that, while watching this streaming on video, the 33 acres on this southeast corner of Jackson and Plank should be zoned high-density residential for the purpose of economically allowing half acres or less. This would be compatible with the surrounding zoning. This would allow family and senior residential use that would best benefit Penfield. And I'll pass that down to the clerk for the file. Yes, our next speaker, please.
Judy Mudge.
I'm Judy Mudge, 2120 Penfield Road. Actually, my parents live there, Bill and Mary Bonomo. I'm here speaking on their behalf. You know, I had a whole thing here written out, and it seems everybody before me has made my point, so I'm gonna use some of their words to give my story. The reason I'm here, and first of all, I want to say kudos to you guys. It's very difficult to put a master plan together. You need the big picture as well as the minutia. Very difficult thing to do. And it sounds like some people might want some tweaking, so you probably have more work to do, so good luck. I wanted to say that first. It is a lot of hard work, and I think the people should appreciate what you have been doing. But what my concern is, my parents live at 2120 Penfield Road. This is across from the Wegmans Plaza on Route 441. I won't even call it Penfield Road anymore, because it's a major highway. I could almost compare it to an expressway, and they live a few feet from it, but they don't have any shrubbery or wall separating them from the noise and the congestion and the dirt and the traffic. It's awful. When we sit in the summer with the windows open to speak with each other, to be heard over the noise, we have to speak this loud, and I am not kidding. You cannot hear the television. It has to be turned up. We're going deaf, living in the house. Now, I know it was about, what, 30 some odd years ago that the permit was granted for Wegmans to go in across the street. But what bothers me is, it seems like there was no consideration giving, given to the residents across from there. And then Wegmans got bigger, now you have Target, then you have commercial on that complete side of the street heading towards the town of Penfield. On the side of the street, my mom and dad are out on, they're completely surrounded by limited commercial and commercial. There's seven homes that are, just seven, that are still residential. And like Sam was saying, livability? There is no livability there. This is a specific request. I don't know if the rezoning of those seven residential properties has to depend on your master plan, because for my parents, you know, they're up in their years now, and they're anxious to move. They have tried to sell the house, as has their neighbors. Not one call to buy it as residential property, not one, every time they've tried. And this has been for years. I'm very emotional about this, as you can imagine. Now, I wanted to address now, as Lloyd's Corners, I know you're gonna be doing things there as well. That's gonna further impact where they live. I was told there's upward of 30,000 vehicles that go down 441 where my parents live a day. Now, I've been driving around Penfield today, and there are the most beautiful, quiet, bedroom, community neighborhoods that everybody here wants to live in in Penfield. But where my mom and dad lives, it's the furthest thing from that. You might as well live on Ridge Road West, 'cause that's what it's like. So I am hoping and praying that that, those properties can be rezoned as limited commercial and pretty quickly here. Let me look at my notes. Now, there were some other things I wanted to make sure that I spoke about. The fumes from the cars are one thing. The dirt when the windows are open in the house. It would be quieter living across from the airport. I know, 'cause I've stayed at that hotel across from it, and there's less traffic and airplanes going by than the traffic going on Penfield Road where my mom and dad live. It's very dangerous to get out of their driveway. You have that light at Harris Whalen there. You have Wegmans. You have the people coming, stopping, going, the noise just from them de-accelerating and then accelerating, the motorcycles, the sirens. Oh my God. I, I've been staying with them during this visit. I cannot get any sleep. It is horrendous. And this is with the window closed at night. You still can't sleep. Every minute, woo, 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 woo. This is what they live with, and I am not even exaggerating. I was gonna get a tape recorder so I could put it here and try and talk above it, just to give you an idea. Also, how would you like to look out at the Wegmans parking lot? Is that where you would like to live? I don't think so. Now, I was told that the folks that have problems with this rezoning are concerned about child safety because of the Harris Hill Elementary School that is behind these properties. But I would like to say that that ship has already set sail. You have a public park adjacent to that school. Now let me ask you something. Would you think it'd be more likely for a child to be abducted from the public park or from Flossie's Cut &amp; Curl Hair Salon? I think that public park is far more dangerous, and that is already there, right next to the school. My other answer to these folks that might have the child safety issue is, I believe that if that was rezoned limited commercial, it could be that you can put a clause in there where they would have to build some sort of security separation. It could be a beautiful wall with beautiful trees of shrubbery on each side. And keep in mind, this is only those few houses that are along there. I think the children would actually be safer. And my other point on that is, when the town years ago had put the Wegmans in, and now we have all commercial around them, you can't make these few people have, you know, they are not able to sell their houses as residential. So it's like you're telling them they can never leave there now, and it's really very unfair. And I don't think anybody in here, like Sam, who is just up, you wouldn't want to live in that kind of, an area. And when I go around all the rest of Penfield, the rest of it's beautiful, quiet, breathtakingly beautiful, actually, especially in the summer. So that would, that is my recommendation, that that would be rezoned to limited commercial. And I also would like to ask the question if that is dependent on the whole master plan being approved, or is this a separate issue that can be taken care of separately and done more expediently?
Sure. What I, what I would suggest doing is maybe reaching out to our planner, and I'm sure she'll give you a card before you leave tonight, and you can have further conversations with her about that.
Thank you. That would be great. I would ask one more thing, because I probably won't be here for your next meetings, 'cause I live in Florida. But I would, I would like to say that I hope if these folks come forward with their concerns, that someone will speak on our behalf, somebody from the board. And I want to give you each, I have a diagram here just showing how surrounded they are, if I could give you each a copy.
Absolutely. And if the weather's real bad this fall, we might come and have the final hearing down in Florida.
Great. Now, this looks like a kindergartner did it, because I am not a very good artist. But I think you get the idea.
Thank you.
The red is commercial and the green is residential.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You said your parents live at 2120.
2120.
Your parents live at 2120?
Yeah.
And Judy, just so you know, while you're in Florida, you can watch our meetings live on your computer if you have nothing else to do. And you can also email in questions or call in live at the same time, right streaming from your computer.
Thank you very much. I will do that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Judy.
I do not have any more.
Okay. So that... So that, uh, that addresses the individuals that signed up. Now, we'll open it up. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Robin Miller, please.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, Madam Clerk, members of the public. My name is Robin Miller. I live at one-four-three Collingsworth Drive. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Penfield Green Initiative. Actually, there are two of us that are gonna speak. We appreciate the opportunity to provide input into the comprehensive plan and the DGEIS. Penfield Green will be submitting detailed written testimony, but we'd like to draw the committee's attention to a couple of bullet points. These are not in priority order, and in some cases refer to both the comprehensive plan and the DGEIS. One thing is regarding habitat. We're asking what the definition of wildlife habitat areas is, as is used in the plan, and what was the source of that definition? Because that's a word that a lot of times people have a pretty superficial, and I'm not saying that this is true in this case, but the, it's, um, something that people often have an unclear definition of. And one of the things that I think, we think is really important to have a very scientific, well-documented definition. The plan talks also regarding habitat. The plan references protecting, quote, valuable environmental features, and one of the goals of the plan of the town is to protect habitat, and we'd like to see that explicitly spelled out a little bit more. Second point I'd like to mention is fiscal responsibility, which I applaud as a taxpayer. But we also encourage the town to attempt to quantify the real long-term and external benefits that might accrue from exercising sound environmental decisions, in addition to the short-term dollar impact. I believe that, we believe that this is important as an underpinning of everything that's being attempted with a town comprehensive plan, and also that this would enhance Penfield's role in environmental stewardship, which I know is a commitment that, um, the town has made. And my third point is, um, someone earlier mentioned the mixed-use area of Sweets Corners. This is a concept that's referenced in several sections of the DGEIS and of the plan itself. And I believe that the town, the committee, and the community have clearly stated that they don't want to change the character of East Penfield, and to me, this seems like a conflict. I believe that, we believe there will be both foreseeable and unforeseeable impacts, unforeseen impacts of increasing development in East Penfield. And also, we have concern that a new mixed-use area might dilute resources that could be supporting the existing six identified business areas in Penfield. I'm gonna turn this over now to another Penfield Green, um, member who's gonna complete, um, our comments, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robin.
Good evening. I'm Deb Murator. I'm, uh, I live at three Penview Drive, and, um, I'm a part of the Penfield Green Initiative, and I'm also the, um, Chair of the Rochester Regional Group of the Sierra Club. I just would like to add one little thing. On the way to work this morning, getting on, um, four ninety at, uh, at Linden Avenue, I saw a little weasel run across the exit ramp. I never, I've lived in Penfield since nineteen eighty-one, and I've never seen one. It was the cutest little thing. Fortunately, I was able to swerve and miss it, but there's, there's definitely a lot of, uh, nice wildlife in, in Penfield that I occasionally see. So to continue on with Robin's talking points, we're gonna talk about the, the Redmond Quarry. We'd like to urge a specific recommendation in the plan when the time comes to evaluate its use. There will be a separate study and impact statement. The quarry is a potential environmental jewel and should be protected and very carefully developed as a natural resource. We urge the commitment that a natural character of this unique topographical feature in woodland be retained. Sidewalks, why are sidewalks being recommended for bicycling? E-pods are cited as helping protect natural resources, yet they are recommendations only. How can we maximize the protection offered by the, an e-pod? And lastly, the wind energy policy. We recommend that wind energy policy be included in the plan and the DGEIS. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Is there anyone else? Yes.
Mark Wood, sixteen-seventy-one Harris Road. So let me first express my appreciation, appreciation to, for the creativity and thought that has gone into this plan. The, specifically the recommendation to develop a mixed-use area, a mixed-use area with an agribusiness theme, I do think is an example of, of creative thinking, and I, I do applaud that. It builds on the town's agricultural background and could provide a distinctive attraction for the community. However, I am very concerned about the proposed location of this area at the intersection of two fifty Sweets Corner Atlantic Avenue. The development of a town center at the edge of a historically rural section of town does run a very high risk of destroying that which we have been trying to promote. So really, if this area is developed as proposed, it seems almost inevitable that the development will spill over into East Penfield. It may take ten, twenty, or thirty years for the full effects to be felt, the previous speaker was commenting about. Thirty years ago, I guess, that Wegmans started the area at Lloyd's Corners. But clearly, this decision now would be the turning point, okay? And even if it is thirty or forty years down the road that the full effects are felt. Penfield has clearly demonstrated, uh, in the past, our desire as a community to keep the, the field in, in Penfield. And if we propose with this proposal, if we proceed with this proposal, I would like to urge the board to seriously consider what steps it can take now to protect the open nature of East Penfield for generations to come. One possible tool is the purchase of development rights. We have already purchased development rights in the, this area here, the Sweets Corner, Dublin area, and protecting additional parcels in this area extending north, uh, north even of Atlantic would provide an effective break against eastward development pressures. These might be parcels that might not have otherwise met our criteria for, uh, protection under our open space policy, but by protecting them here, that would make a half ring here that could protect, uh, East Penfield. So I will allow that if the town is very vigilant and proactive, a small, limited, mixed-use development in this area could possibly be an asset to the town. However, I see nothing in the plan, virtually nothing in this plan, that describes how the, the risk of this sprawling into East Penfield will be mitigated. And I do consider that developing this here to be a very, very risky proposition. It would be more prudent to develop an agribusiness, mixed-use area, and some other area of town, perhaps as an extension of an existing or proposed mixed-use area. I have some other comments, but I'll submit them in writing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to address? Yes, please.
Hi. Rosemary Johnson, twenty-two-hundred Nine Mile Point Road. And I'm a homeowner in the two fifty-four forty-one area, and we only have fifteen thousand cars that go by our house every day, and that's for the two fifty corridor study. As a homeowner, I would like to agree with the possibility of looking at changing the use of the properties along the two fifty corridor that go to the, um, Parenton Town Line. And, um, as a resident of thirty-seven years, I know how much the town has grown, and I also know how much this area has grown. And just living two houses down from Doodle Bugs, I'm also very aware that the town needs to continue to grow in that area. So I would just like to say thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Thank you for coming. Yes, uh, anyone else like to address the board? Yes, Rose?
Hi, I'm Rose Hanscom. I live at one forty-five Ani Trail Drive.
I was gonna say, why don't you pull that down, 'cause you're standing on your toes there.
Um, just to, um, piggyback off of what one of the people just said, um, I think mixed-use is a, a good way to go. I encourage it in the town. When we went to the community forums, my husband and I, we suggested that that was a possibility for the, um, area around Baytown, which, uh, Mr. DeMarco wants to zone as general business. When we did go to the community forums, my husband and I were in two separate groups, and honestly, I have to agree with the gentleman that spoke first. The town center was indeed the place, the focus for this hamlet or mixed-use idea. And consideration of other areas that might be closer to commercial districts were not given much credence. There was no time to talk about it, apparently. It was, it was indeed the town center for this particular area. And I do believe that, I'm not sure where this goes, just because you have it, I, I don't believe it will, the vision of it may be beautiful, but I just don't believe developers are coming through with the vision that we want to see for Penfield. So how do you guarantee that it's gonna look the way you vision it? How do you put that in words? How do you make that happen with so much land there? I, I, I don't know. But we do have other areas in Penfield that could develop on a smaller scale, that vision for mixed-use, because I am a senior citizen, like to think there are resources here available for me, or going to be a senior citizen soon enough. I consider myself senior. And this area of town being close to, um, commercial areas, the Y, would be a really wonderful hamlet for pedestrian office space, intense petty homes, town, townhouses, homes. I think there are other areas that mixed-use could be developed, which are not currently in the land use plan. I think to piggyback off what this lady says, in the two thousand comprehensive plan, there's a lot of words about smooth transitioning between residential districts and general business and, uh, less intense business districts. There is a lot of wording on that, and I don't see a lot of wording on this plan regarding smooth transitioning so that residents are in fact protected against commercial development, which I pity the people. I mean, I, I really pity, and so I wonder way back when, why this wasn't looked at. I don't know if it was. I can't believe it was, because this is like, I, I just can't imagine living there. I just can't imagine. And I know that where I live, in the part of Penfield that I do, on Ani Trail Drive, near Baytown, the noise is incredible. And I don't live on a main road, and our windows are shut. So I can't imagine what that is for you all. And that frightens me, that something that big could have been developed next to residential. And I really believe there needs to be smooth transitioning, and the wording for that needs to be in this comp plan. I don't see it. I don't, I, it talks about appropriate buffers. I don't think that's enough. I'm a detailed person, um, and I do have qualms with some of the definitions in this plan, particularly relative to high and low residential definitions, because half-acre lots, um, even my half-acre is point four-five, whatever it is, it's, it's a R-one-twenty, would be considered in a high-dense district based on the definitions in the plan. I think those definitions need to be more specific relative to maybe square footage of land, but I, I don't have a half-acre land, and I'm R-one-twenty, so I would be considered high-dense based on those definitions in the plan. I mean, little point. And the other point, just another little point, is when the youth groups were asked for their feedback, I love that, because if they were anything like my son, their ideas are our future. And I want my son to come up with creative ideas for the community he lives in. I want him to be involved in the community. So having that was wonderful. Having both youth groups from the Penfield Central School District bothers me, because forty-five percent of all our youth go to Webster schools, and I would have loved to have seen them included in this plan in somehow, some fashion. I mean, if you're gonna include the youth, let's include a full representation of the town, because those little things make us feel like we're actually a part of the town, of Penfield, those of us that live in the Webster School District. Those little nuances is really walking the walk and not just talking the talk, that that part of Penfield is going to really increase its identity. It's not gonna happen unless you include us. And it's not gonna happen unless it comes from the top, from the comp plans, the town board. It's not gonna happen. And I, and I'm depending on the committees, the boards, to, to take, take those little details and recognize that that's how you could have included the Webster youth, um, in this plan. I guess, I guess that's it. Thanks. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Rose. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address, uh, the board on the comp plan? Dave Woodward, please. You don't have lights on the tractors, Dave? You're?
I do, but...
You quit, you quit early today.
Yeah. Dave Woodward, fifteen-thirty Harris Road. Some of the things of what you look at, you know, aren't things that you can actually write into the comp plan. Some things, you know, you've gotta have this foresight maybe of a board, you know, keep them in the back of their minds, you know, and think down the road. You know, when you go and decide that, you know, a certain thing is fits, sometimes you gotta think, well, what would be the second use? You know, today, you know, we have, uh, the townhouses there, you know, and it's all these young folks, or maybe it's the senior ones today, and well, what's gonna happen tomorrow? And sometimes you gotta think, you know, is this gonna work now and in the future? And it's not something that you're gonna be right all the time, you know, but sometimes, you know, if you think down there, you, maybe you can make it a little bit better, you know, for the future. I think one of the biggest themes that got brought out at the end of the comp, uh, committee was the fiscal responsibility. I think that's one of the things that, um, it wasn't really brought out, I don't believe, at any of the, uh, meetings with the public, but I do think it's one that, you know, really hits home with everyone today, um, so I think that's important. And like the one individual brought out, you know, about the different costs of the different, um, uses, whether it's commercial, agricultural, you know, or residential, you know, anybody who looks in the open space plan, you know, can see, you know, how they've got it broken down and how different commercials have different benefits and different costs to them, so not everything's the same. Uh, so there is benefits to different uses, even within, you know, the zoning. Um, and I think one of the biggest things looking at, you know, when you, if you're going to like higher density, you know, and if you're getting incentives for doing it, are you really gaining anything? Are we just shifting the tax burden to another entity? You know, are we, we're giving an incentive, you know, 'cause we're gonna have a senior citizens, you know, area, but we're shifting the burden over to the emergency services? You know, and I can, I don't have a problem with having areas for the senior citizens, but if we're gonna give incentives for that, are we really getting anything? You know, are we just shifting tax dollars, you know, of how it's affecting the rest of us? I don't think many of us realize that every time, you know, we invite a few more people into the community, you know, to build a few more homes, it's generally a tax-negative, you know, relative to residential homes, um, even though that's part of progress, if you will. And the last thing, I think, like the mixed-use, you know, alls I can say is just proceed cautiously with whatever you decide, because, you know, it can be something great, or, you know, it's tough, you know? I mean, people who want to have small businesses, it's just hard to make those little businesses really work, you know, and I'd like to see whatever got done, you know, be profitable and be a real plus for the town. It's not gonna be an easy battle, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Thank you very much for coming. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on the plan? Yeah, Paul. Good to see ya. Good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Oh, my pleasure. I just wanted to thank the board for the opportunity to be on the planning committee. And I wanted to let people know that what we learned on the committee was extremely interesting. We had a two-year commitment that we had to make to be on the committee. And I must admit that I had never been bored at one of our meetings. We learned what it took to build and maintain a town, and what goes into it, and all the aspects that have to be considered. And it was extremely rewarding type of opportunity. And I just encourage other people in Penfield to get involved and join in. You won't regret it at all. It was, it was a wonderful learning experience. So that's all. Thank you.
Paul, thank you. Thanks for the support on the plan. Yes, is there anyone else that would like to, to address the board? Debbie Dra, our chairperson and county legislator for the 9th District.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, members of the town board. I would just really personally like to thank the staff here in the town of Penfield who helped so much with this comprehensive plan. Katie Evans, Evan Shepherd, Doug Fox, our consultant, Jim Costello. We also have Julie Toller, which we didn't mention. She also did all this beautiful, the mappings for us, right here in-house. John Steinmetz, of course, and Matt Engels, which I know you already thanked him, Mr. Supervisor. And thank you for your time. I know that it was a very busy time for you, Mr. Supervisor, to be on that committee. You took a lot of time out. I know you were in the process of, of leaving, retiring from Kodak. So I know that it was extremely tough couple of years for you. And also, town board member Rob Quinn, thank you for being on the committee. And I know you already mentioned the people who are here tonight. Dave Woodward is here tonight. Paul Craig, he was instrumental. Mike Quinn, and also with Grace, I don't know if they're still here. But thank you all. There's also a whole bunch of other members. I did want to mention to everyone that we began with 21, I think Paul alluded to, all the, the members on that committee. We began with 21, we ended with 21. For a two-year process, an 18-month commitment, almost, almost a two-year process. The meetings were intense. We didn't always agree. There was some angst, but we always agreed at the end of our meetings, we always were respectful of each other's opinions, concerns, issues. And we appreciated, we opened it up to the public at the focus groups, the forums. I think that we did, we tried our best. We tried to be open and honest on this whole, this whole town comprehensive plan because actually, it's a, it's a document for all of you, all the residents of Penfield, to use for the future here in Penfield. I'm really, I'm extremely proud. I know there might be some things that people want to make comments about and concerns, and maybe we do tweak it a little bit. So, and that's up to you, now the town board, to, to take all this information and, and think about it and digest it. So thank you all. I just wanted to do that. And thank you for the, I was honored to be the chairperson of this committee. So, thank you.
Thank you. What Debbie didn't indicate is that one of the reasons we had such a successful tenants' record is that she baked for most of the meetings, and baked very well, I must say. So there was always, people got to the meeting first so they could get, take advantage of the cookies, right, Mike Quinn back there? All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
It was a tough, tough time and night. Four to six was, was hard for people at the end of the day. So I appreciate them.
Yeah, good.
Debbie, it's the end of our day, too. And I don't see any cookies.
Yeah, I will. That's a good point. Okay. Is there, is there anyone else that would like to address the board on the comp plan? Again, this isn't the, this isn't the end. The, the period of time that this stays open is until the 17th at 5:00 PM, 17th of September, where you can submit emails, hard copy, written, either mail it in or fax it in. You can come in and sit down with the board and actually get a copy, excuse me, with the staff and get a copy of the plan and go through the plan and take a look at that if you want to do that. So there certainly are plenty of opportunities to continue, and I would encourage everyone to, in fact, continue to do that and get that information in. Okay. One last call for any more comments. Again, I would, yes, sir. Please come right up.
My name is Larry Harkins. I live at 599 Embry Road. I'd like to congratulate the town board and the group that put this plan together. I think that, in my opinion, it's a very thorough plan with a lot of interesting ideas in it. Like some of the others who have spoken, I do have some concerns about the town center concept. It's a very interesting concept. At first glance, I really liked it because we don't really have a town center here. But as I thought about it more, it seems a little strange to me to put a town center at a three-way intersection as opposed to a four-way intersection. And secondly, it seems to me to conflict with the idea of maintaining the agricultural land that we already have, since that area is largely agricultural and would have to be transformed into something else. So that was my observation on that. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight, Larry. Thank you very much. Okay. Any other comments? Just one last plug for our staff. Katie Evans, Evan Shepherd, Jim Costello, who's over here behind the computer, Doug Fox, who has tried to retire, and we still keep bringing him back with his 30-plus years in Penfield planning. John Steinmetz and, and Matt Engels for the support that they had with us as well. And all of the, all of the volunteers was, that was on the committee, there's a voluntary board. They came in and gave of their time, and they gave of their time, you know, very, without, without even thinking and doing some work after the meetings. And I just can't thank that group enough for that commitment and working through that. So if there are seeing no more hands, I will declare this public hearing closed. And again, you have until the 17th of September. And please feel free to use any of the media to provide input, feedback, and comments to the board. Thank you for your time. Good evening.